Okay. Good evening. It is 5:30 on Tuesday, January 19th, 2021, and this is the regular meeting of the Sandpoint Planning and Zoning Commission. It's now called to order. For the record, I am Chairman Jason Welker, presiding in council chambers at City Hall 1123 West Lake Street in Sandpoint, Idaho. Also present are Commissioners John Hastings, Kate Pleasman, Tom Riggs, Slate Camp, Horace Shuck, and Mo Dunkle. Commissioners Pleasman, Riggs, and Shuck are participating remotely. Are there any general announcements or reports from the Commissioners?
None here.
Okay.
None.
No.
Okay. Hearing none, we will move on. If there are any members of the public participating on Zoom who wish to address the Commission on a general matter other than this evening's public hearing, please raise your hand on Zoom. Clerk, do you have any members of the public?
Mr. Chairman, we have one member of the public attending and no raised hands.
Okay, thank you. All right, next on the agenda is approval of the meeting minutes from the Commission's last meeting. I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the January 5th, 2021 regular meeting.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion passes and the minutes are approved. The next item on our agenda is old business. There is no old business on the agenda this evening, so we'll move on to new business. The final item on the agenda this evening is a public hearing and subsequent decision regarding city application PVAR 20-0002, which is a request from Anne Neal and Aaron Levi, who are present in the chambers with us, to obtain a variance to construct a home and garage at 516 Lavina Avenue that in total exceed the building footprint requirements of the Sandpoint City Code 9-413C2. The notice of public hearing was published in the Bonner County Daily Beyond December 29th, 2020. The order and procedure for the public hearing will be as follows. One, explanation of the subject of the public hearing by city staff. Two, presentation by the applicant. Please note the Commissioner should address their questions to the applicant at this time. Three, opening of the public hearing, at which time the public may provide testimony. Questions should be asked of those testifying at that time. The order for those providing testimony will be as follows. In favor, neutral, and opposed. Four, rebuttal testimony from the applicant, at which time final questions may be asked of the applicant. Please note that if new facts are elicited during rebuttal, the public will be given an opportunity to comment on any new facts. Five, close the public hearing. Six, Commission deliberates. No new information may be provided after the public hearing has been closed, and questions may be directed only to city staff during deliberation. Before we proceed any further, I would like to ask for confirmation from each Commissioner that you have had no ex parte contact or conflict of interest as pertains to this request, if we could go around and testify to that effect.
None here.
John?
None.
I live on Lavina, and I've probably talked to them walking by my house before.
Okay.
But that's it.
None from Riggs.
None for Huesman.
Okay. I personally have a conflict of interest in that I am personal friends with the contractor who is building this house. And not only that, but he's also a fiscal sponsor of Fondre Peddlers, which is my employer. So I've been advised that I should recuse myself from tonight's hearing. Fonda, should I hand it over to John?
Yes, so Commissioner Welker, what you'll do is recuse yourself from proceeding any further in sharing this public hearing, and you will recuse yourself from deliberations and hand it over to Commissioner Hastings at this point to proceed.
Okay. And should I stay in the chambers or should I leave?
You are welcome to stay in the chambers, but since this is the only item of business, you cannot in any way comment, make faces, do anything that would in any way direct the discussion or decision making of the other Commissioners.
If it's all right with you, I think I'll stay and just remain. I'll keep my mask on, so don't.
There you go.
Okay, thank you, John. All yours.
And did we get affirmatives from everybody else on the no ex parte contact? So now we'll hear from city staff, and they will provide us with an explanation regarding this application.
I thank Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. My name is Darren Fluke. I'm the interim City Planning Director, and I'll be handling the presentation this evening for you. The site in question for the Neal variance is located here, as you see on the first slide, which is on the west side of Lavina Avenue, which is north of Ontario Street and south of Erie. Next slide. The original site plan, as submitted by the applicant, is shown here. It shows the house in the front of the property to the right there, where it shows 50 feet of frontage is Lavina Avenue, with a detached garage with accessory dwelling unit above that to the rear of the structure. The applicant's request specifically is to exceed the maximum lot coverage of 35%, which is allowed by the RS zoning designation. They're asking for a variance to exceed that lot coverage by 6.4%, which would result in about a 41.4% lot coverage, or approximately 421 square feet above what is allowed by this number. Next slide, please. The applicable law here is in Section 9413C of the Sandpoint City Code, which establishes the maximum lot coverage in the RS zone. In pertinent part, it does state, and you'll see C2 below, that 35% is the maximum coverage. If the Commission was interested, the purpose of the lot coverage standard, together with what we consider bulk standards, height and setbacks, control the overall look and feel of the property. And they're intended to assure that taller buildings will not have a large footprint and that their total bulk will not overwhelm the neighborhood, or the residential zoning designation. Next slide, please. This table is in your staff report, and so I'm not going to belabor the events other than to point out for you that the original application by the applicants was submitted on February 26th, their original building permit application. The subsequent completeness review did note that the site plan exceeded the allowable lot coverage, and the applicants were advised to submit revised plans. There was two sets of revisions submitted, and then the owners submitted the plan, which you'll see in just a second, as their preferred approach to complying with the lot coverage, which was in compliance with the code. And I'm sure the applicant will talk to you about this, but there was subsequent inspections of the project as it was being built for the roof sheathing and the framing that did not catch the issue at that time. And we'll talk a bit more about that later on. Next slide, please. So the original building plans looked like this in their elevation form. The right elevation is, if you were looking straight on at the house, which is the bottom drawing, would be to the right of that drawing. And what you see here is a fairly conventional design, where the house, just like you had expected, to be drawn. So this is what was originally submitted, and it was determined and agreed upon that this did exceed the lot coverage standard for the zone. And so the applicant was requested to submit revised plans with their solution for the problem. Next slide, please. And in response to that, they did two things. One, I'm not showing you, which is they reduced the building footprint for the garage and accessory dwelling unit by 5%, approximately. And then they still had about 5% to go. And so the preferred solution was to add a trellis structure in replacement of the existing solid porch. And so what you see on the top left is an elevation drawing indicating those trellises there on the back porch and the front porch. And the front elevation shows you the same thing, that the front porch was to be trellised rather than a solid cover, which it was determined by staff that that would comply with the standards of the code regarding lot coverage. Next slide, please. Just for your reference, this is what the structure looks like as built at that time. You'll see that the front porch is solid there on the upper left, as it is in the right elevation, both on the rear and front porch covers. Next slide, please. So, back to the applicable law. What does the Idaho Code say about variances? I noted for you early on in this definition that lot coverage is highlighted there. So this is allowed by the Idaho Code as something that the Commission may approve a variance for. The code goes on to specify where or how the Commission can approve a variance. And you should note that it shall not be considered a right or a special privilege, but may be granted to an applicant only upon a showing of undue hardship because of characteristics of the site. That is something about this lot that distinguishes it from other lots within the zone. And the variance shall not be in conflict with the public interest. The important point here is that this law is fairly typical of the lots within this zoning designation. And there's really nothing in particular or outstanding about the lot that would show that the lot couldn't comply with the standards of the zone. Next slide, please. No further with applicable law. We'll move to the Sandpoint City Code, which mirrors the state code fairly closely in its language. I did highlight here for you a section of your code that says that you may approve the variance where it will not be contrary to the public interest, where owing to special conditions, a literal enforcement of the terms of the provision of the Sandpoint Code would not result or would result in unnecessary hardship. So again, the Sandpoint Code is fairly well mirroring the state code saying there needs to be something fairly particular about the lot in question that would keep it from complying with the same rules and regulations that every other lot has to comply with in the zone. In number two down there, you see that you shall not grant a variance to allow a use that's not permissible under the terms of the code, excuse me. And this provision's not applicable in this case because obviously a single-family dwelling is permitted in the zone. So this is not a use variance, just for your information. Next slide, please. So with regard to the required findings of fact, and these are included in Section 996B4 of the Sandpoint City Code. And there are four of them. And it's important for you to recognize that if you find in the affirmative and are going to grant the variance as requested, that all four of these findings must be met. And that is specifically that special conditions and circumstances exist which are peculiar to the land, structure, or buildings in the same district. That a literal interpretation of the applicable sections of this code would deprive the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by other properties in that same district. And that special considerations, conditions, and circumstances do not result from actions or desires of the applicant. And finally, that granting the variance requested will not confer on the applicant any special privileges that are denied by this code to other land, structures, or buildings in the same district. Next slide, please. So, as you're well aware, Mr. Chairman and members of the Commission, tonight, having heard the staff report, you will now hear from the applicant. If you have any questions for the applicant, at the close of their testimony would be the appropriate time to ask those questions. And then, opening the public hearing, you will hear from members of the public, should any wish to testify this evening. And then you will hear from the applicant one final time in response to what was put on the record by the public. And then you'll close the public hearing and conduct your deliberations. Next slide, please. And so you'll have two choices for you tonight. It's a rather binary question. Vote to approve. If you find that all four findings of fact are true, and that is supported by evidence and testimony on the record, then you will vote for approval. And you have a motion in your packet for that. And conversely, if you find that any one of the four findings are unable to be met, then the motion would properly be for a denial. And again, that language is included for you within your packet. I believe that it concludes staff's presentation for this evening. If you had questions of me, I'd be happy to take those now. And if not, then you would properly move to the applicant and ask for their statement. Thank you.
Does any Commissioner have questions at this point for city staff?
I do none.
No.
No.
All right. Oh, you do.
Are there any other lots in the area that have this specific variance granted already?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, I'm not aware of any other lots within this area that have received a variance for this particular standard.
I'll piggyback on that question then. The other homes in the neighborhood that are beyond the 35%, were they grandfathered in on existing footprints? Or how did they get to be there?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, that would be my assumption that if there are lots that don't comply with the standard, that they either existed prior to the adoption of that standard and are therefore grandfathered in as legally non-conforming uses, or that it was somehow missed at the time of building permit. I don't have additional information for you in that regard.
Any other city staff have... okay. Any other questions? Hearing none, next will be the applicant's presentation. As a reminder, Commissioners, you should address any questions to the applicants during this time. Lord, yours.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. Thank you for allowing us to be here today and express our request in person. That was a nice summation. I really appreciate it. I feel like I've got a whole mountain in front of me here. So I'd just like to review some of the history as already stated. In that we did initially submit our plans to the planning department in March. And we were notified at that point in time that our footprint was at 45%, 10% too large. And we worked with the planning department and their architects, and we reduced our garage/ADU by 5%. And then we came up with the plan of the trellises, another additional 5%, which brought us into compliance. And so we went forward with those plans. Our contractor, Travis Harmon, broke ground in the beginning of April. We had a footing inspection the end of April, roof sheeting inspection the end of June, framing inspection August. And I'm not exactly sure of the timetable. But I do recall going to the site and seeing that the areas in question in the back of the house, two areas eight by eight that were meant to be trellised, I noticed that they were filled in. And I asked our architect...
No, our builder.
Builder, excuse me. Travis Harmon, thank you. What occurred that that got filled in? And I don't actually know what words were exchanged between Travis and Christine, the inspector. But it appeared as if it led him to believe that it was okay that those areas were filled in. Here's where I have to claim I was naive. Because as I understand it now, which I did not understand it then, in that there was a change in the plan that we needed to talk to the planning department at that time.
That the inspection, the roof inspection, was not in and of itself, that it passed the roof inspection with these areas complete, was not in and of itself an okay to fill it in, even though it left Travis and ourselves believing that it had been properly inspected and approved. I don't know if you know Travis Harmon. Can I stop talking now a little bit? We're probably gonna just go back and forth here.
Sure.
We've tried to decide how to do this, and honestly, we'll just kind of wing it, I think. But I don't know if you know Travis Harmon. Clearly, Commissioner Welker knows Travis. Travis has devoted his life in Sandpoint to becoming the most reputable, upright, honest builder that I can imagine having. There isn't a store that we have walked into, whether it has been the granite store, the wood stove store, the flooring store, whichever store, Misty Mountain, where people ask us, "Who is your builder?" And we say Travis Harmon, and they say, "Lucky you." And Travis fully believed that whatever transpired between he and the inspector, that he could complete the roof in the manner that it is now complete. And so he moved forward, and he told us that this interaction had happened. We weren't there. We can't speak to what went on. But we can tell you that what we know of Travis, and we believe the inspection reports as well. That was the documentation that we had. At no time have we ever received any communication from the city out of non-compliance. The roof sheeting inspection happened in June. It was October when Travis was informed that the house was out of compliance. By then, we'd had a framing inspection. During the framing inspection, the roof was totally completed, including the fascia, the soffits, the electricity, and the roofing shingles. And nothing was said at that point that we were out of compliance. It wasn't until October, nearly four months later, just ahead of the insulation inspection, that Christine told, the inspector told Travis that it wasn't right and that it would have to be redone. And redoing it represents thousands of dollars, our dollars, in labor and materials that we would have never spent had we been communicated with in a timely manner. We could have totally fixed the problem. And as Aaron has said, we were incredibly naive. We should, but we trusted Travis implicitly. We still do. We love him. And we trusted the inspection reports that we were given. It was the only documentation that we had that had told us that our house was being regularly inspected and was in compliance with those inspections. So that's how we got to this point, that we have a house that we're really supposed to be moving into February 1.
Also, I would like to mention that this is not a large house. The footprint for the house itself, not the roof, and I know that's what's counted, but the footprint for the house is 1,200 square feet. The footprint for the garage ADU, it's 26 by 24. I think that's 630-somehow square feet as well. These are not large buildings. But of course, what makes the house large is that it has a porch in the front and a porch in the back. Underneath those porches, water can drain. Those are not impervious surfaces. The square footage, or the footprint for the house and the ADU garage is 41.4%. The other impervious surfaces, which there's an allowance of 30% for those, is 15%. So we have a total of 56% of impervious surfaces on the property. The allowable total is 65, so we're well under that. If the issue ultimately is drainage on the property, clearly we are well under the 65% allowable. I know that doesn't have anything to do with code as it's presented, but in all practical terms, it really allows appropriate drainage for any house in the area. Also, one other thing I do want to mention. When we had asked the planning department about any other houses in the area that were experiencing larger footprints...
Were enjoying the variance that we seek.
Ryan Che had sent us a tool to go ahead and actually look at houses in the area and measure them out. And we have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, nine different houses within blocks of where we live, or where our house is, where we're planning to live. Quite a few houses, by the tool that was supplied to us from the planning department that was actually measuring lots and roof sizes as they exist right now, we came up with at least nine of them. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9 of them. And they are listed in our statements that we supplied.
Our narrative.
They are narrative.
And it addresses one of the four questions that Mr. Fluke... Did I get his name right?
He did.
That he was outlining for you. The first one, the special conditions and circumstances which exist, which are peculiar. I also use the word unique. It's a synonym to peculiar to the land. He really told you, "This is a flat piece of land. We're not on water. There's no hill." It's true. That's it. And, but the things that I have said, or we have said, that things that we share within that district that we feel are common to all the houses, are uneven and incomplete sidewalks, a shortage of off-street parking, a renaissance of antiquated structures and buildings in the area to beautify and retain the vintage charm of South Sandpoint, an influx of day-use visitors to the newly renovated memorial field and an elementary school, which increases traffic flow twice daily during the months that school is in session. And then number two, is that what Aaron just outlined, that we have identified these houses perhaps grandfathered in. Some of them may, and some of them seem quite new. There's one across the street and down that's done kind of Alpine-ish Bavarian style. That house is quite new. So I can't speak to that. When Ryan asked us to revise this narrative that we submitted, we had to revise it one time. These were never addressed as telling us that they were not acceptable in terms of... that they were enjoying the variance that we're seeking, basically. And then the special considerations and conditions and circumstances in this part, I feel, we both feel, is very important because our home has passed four inspections, the foundation, the roof sheeting, the framing, and the insulation, without any official word of non-compliance to us, the owners. If at any time the city found our home to be out of compliance, we would have expected a notification of some type, be it a letter, a phone call, an email, or text. And I noticed that within the city's assessment, they said that they had followed up with us after they had communicated this to Travis, our contractor. And that is actually inaccurate. They did not follow up with us. We followed up with them. We contacted Mr. Qualls, Aaron Qualls. He did not reach out to us. And at no time have we ever received any official documentation other than the approved inspections from the city. To date, we have received nothing of this sort. Quite to the contrary, the only documentation we possess is that our home was and is being regularly inspected for compliance and has passed all of these inspections. and has passed all of these inspections in accordance with the city code. As a consequence of the city's omission, and please, I mean no disrespect here, absolutely none. I'm, please, please know that. I mean absolutely no disrespect. But it is our story and we have to say it. It's just awkward, somewhat embarrassing, definitely confusing and for us to be here. As a consequence of the city's omission to inform us in a timely manner of any non-compliance, our home has progressed to be nearly complete. Had we been notified of the areas of non-compliance at the time occurrence, we could have, we would have had the ability to intervene and correct the error. These special considerations, conditions, and circumstances do not result from our actions or desires, and this addresses number four, but from an internal oversight on the part of the City of Sandpoint's planning department. We believe the City of Sandpoint would, out of an abundance of goodwill, responsibility, and culpability, grant this variance to other land structures or buildings in the same district who could show the supporting documentation and similar circumstances. We would also, I don't know, we would talk about the one letter that we received, Amanda, from a neighbor of ours that is in, does not support this variance. Is that something I should address now, or?
You're welcome to address anything you think is pertinent, and I'm happy to bring it up if you'd like me to.
Okay, thank you. We have received a number of letters of support from our neighbors directly across the street, directly to the south, behind us, and in the greater South Sandpoint neighborhoods from over on Boyer, St. Clair, Florence. We did receive one letter from a neighbor down the street, actually, on the Vina. They were not within the 300, 300 feet radius from our house to which a notification was sent. They were not within that, but they did submit a letter. It's the Sherman family. And I was surprised, we both were surprised that the Shermans, because they have just built a home there, because we have had so many people stop by our house, neighbors, and tell us that our home in that area was adding value to their home. So it surprised us that our one neighbor would advocate for our house to be literally dismantled at this point, literally dismantled, resulting in a hardship of thousands of dollars to us, both from the past and going into the future in terms of its aesthetic and just general upkeep of the house after having to be dismantled in such a manner. That to devalue our home would in fact potentially devalue their home. So that was surprising to us. Also, Erin and I agree, we actually agree with one of the statements in the letter, which says, they did not request confirmation of their assumption. We assumed that our house was being regularly inspected and built in compliance with those inspections for months, after numerous inspections were completed and approved. We actually believed that our house was being, was being shepherded along by the city. And we also believed our builder. We believed, we believed in his integrity to the end. And so we didn't question it, and we should have. We see that now. But the part that, other, the third part about this letter is when he state, they state, our understanding in speaking with the planning department is that the building inspectors are inspecting for structural code compliance and are not confirming that the structure has been built within the necessary setbacks and under the 35% impervious space. So this person, this family, our dear new neighbors, did not know either that the nuances of inspection, which is outlined in the city's statement, which is, the inspector comes to the house, to the site, and looks for, I think it's called life safety aspects of building. So by this person who wrote this letter, not in favor of the variance, they didn't know either, it seems, until they talked to the city that, in fact, the city inspector's job is quite nuanced, that there are aspects of a job site that they look at and that they don't look at. We believed that the inspector would come to the site and look at the whole structure. This is, this is a permit that this inspector actually signed off on, that they would look at the whole site, the whole house, and then they would look at the parts. What kind of wood was used? What kind of nails were used? What is the nail pattern? How many nails? Was it the right nails? And that they would have found any aspects of the job that were not in compliance. And so for us to assume that, it's clearly stated that the Shermans did not understand that until they called the city. Because at least, I'm reading between the lines, perhaps. But when they say, our understanding in speaking with the planning department, so they understood that only after speaking to the planning department. So I don't think it's an uncommon assumption on the part of a builder, who, a homeowner who has never done this before, that the inspector would be looking for compliance with the building permits. And after subsequent positive inspections, would have caught that before the house was completed to such a state that to dismantle it would result in an incredible hardship. We don't have, Erin and I, Erin's retired from a long career in medicine. I'm Cindy, retired from a long career in medicine and education. We plan to move back to Sandpoint. We lived here 20 years ago. We moved away to have jobs. We plan to move back, or it was our dream to move back. We have a, we don't, we're not cavalier with our money. We would never unwitting, knowingly try to dupe the city out of, to do something that that clearly we see now goes against the code, that we misunderstood that the inspections, we guess, should have been questioned. We should have questioned them. So we feel we have satisfied those four points.
And also, I would just like to reiterate, the vast majority of the community or neighborly response to our house has been, we like what you're doing to our neighborhood. We'd like it to stay the way it is. Just in that, we've had a lot of, a lot of positive response from the neighbors. I don't know how much that plays into anything, but I think, for me at least, that's a significant thing. Anyway.
I agree. And then we, we did want to end on a positive note with the city. That was important to us. So we listed some things. We scoured the Sandpoint's comprehensive plan to find ways that our house supported that plan. And those are listed on page, on our page four. I don't know what page it is in your packet. But we designed that home to be seamless, to seamlessly interface with the surrounding homes in the neighborhood. In fact, as I was looking through the comprehensive plan, the house that we designed, the siding package on is actually pictured in the comprehensive plan as an example of the vintage charm of South Sandpoint. We were providing, our intent with the ADU has always been to provide long-term housing. It's never been to have a vacation rental. It has always been to provide housing. Because when we moved here, we had to rent an apartment site unseen from Bellingham where we lived. And we, so we are so aware of the housing shortage in Sandpoint, and that I know supports Sandpoint's comprehensive plan. It affords walkability and biking to stores, entertainment, and recreational areas. It's very close to the Spot Bus Line. It's designed to be energy efficient. It has heated floors. It's small, like Erin said, it is not a large home. It's these large covered decks, which in this era of life, outside, covered outside spaces are a commodity where people can gather. We provide off-street parking for our owners, for ourselves and the tenant, helping to relieve some of the congestion that in near Memorial Field. And we have placed a sidewalk in the front in accordance with city code to support the plan's goal for multimodal neighborhoods, the safe and connected sidewalks.
I think we, I think we've said what we are able to say.
We, we recognize where we fell short. We think there are so many positives about our house for our neighborhood and for Sandpoint. And in closing, we respectfully, I thank you for your time to listen to us and.
Do commissioners have any questions for the applicants at this time?
I have some questions. You mentioned that you, there are those four considerations that had to be met if we were to be able to grant you a variance. And could you just repeat again, please, how you met, or you felt you met the considerations C and D? Do you remember what those are? Or can those be put back up on the screen again, just to help them?
C and D, in our, in our narrative to the city, the project narrative, they were lumped together. So three, three is three and four. That special considerations, conditions, and circumstances do not result from the actions or desires of the applicant. And four, that granting the variance requested will not confer on the applicant any special privileges that are denied by the city code to other land structures and buildings. We feel that the special considerations, conditions, and circumstances that do not result from our actions and desires are that our home had passed four inspections. The foundation, the roof sheeting, the framing, and the insulation. Well, actually, it's really three. It happened just before the insulation inspection. The two most important ones there are the roof sheeting and the framing, because those are the two inspections. One was in June and the next one was in August, two months later, where the roof had been, in the areas meant for trellising, had been filled in completely and inspected and approved.
So you feel, I'm sorry, if I could just clarify this. Rather than resulting from your actions and desires, the need for a variance is a result of inadequate communication from the city or untimely communication from the city, which led you to believe that you are meeting the requirements of the code. Is that correct?
That is correct. That is, you have.
One other, one other aspect to that. When Travis filled in the first trellises, and I stated earlier, I don't know what transpired between him and the inspector, but something led him to believe that it was okay that that was done.
Okay.
And so that is, those are the special considerations. And then D, that we, because, again, no disrespect intended, that, and we understand there's been a lot of overturning of staff, and I'm sure it's been challenging, that that because of this omission, because of the lack of communication to us in a timely way where we could have intervened before we had invested thousands of dollars in labor and materials, if we had been told, then we could have intervened. And that the city, out of an abundance of goodwill and recognition of their role or part in this oversight or omission or assumption or whatever we, whatever I might call it, would grant the same thing to anyone else who could show the same documentation, which in this case is the inspections, because that's all we have, are the inspections that have been approved. The roof was approved a couple times. And anybody who could show that and the same conditions and circumstances and documentation, the city would, would recognize that their responsibility in this and grant the variance to anyone else who could show the similar things. So that's where we do not feel that, that any special privileges would be conferred on us that, that would be denied somebody else that could show the same documentation and similar circumstances.
Okay, great. That clarifies that for me. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Have questions? Have you received a cost estimate to remedy the situation?
Not at this time.
Any, so no, no idea, ballpark idea maybe?
I'm not knowledgeable enough in terms of materials and time and all that, so no, I have not received.
We can tell you that electricity is in these areas, lights are in. The soffits are covered with pine, pine soffits, metal fascia.
Cedar, excuse me.
Cedar, cedar on the soffits. And then asphalt shakes on.
Those would be significant.
It would be. And it already has been in terms of, to put it in.
Okay, another question. So it's been stated that there was an inspection on July 30th of sheeting. And that's specifically roof sheeting? Do we have, like, a document showing that inspection report?
I have it here.
And then also on August 31st, an inspection of framing, which I'm not a builder either, but that seems out of order to me. Although I could be wrong about that. So I have a question about that, but that's kind of off the top of it. Was there any changes between those two inspections? Like, was the trellis built to the standard that was outlined in the application? And then after those inspections, it was filled in? Is that the, I'm just.
It was partially filled in during the roof sheeting.
Okay, so the.
The part, the back of the house.
Back part of the house was already filled in at that point.
Okay, so the inspections were done and, and there have been steps taken towards filling in the trellis areas that are in question when those inspections were completed and passed, as far as I.
As far as we know, that's what it appears to be.
Okay. Do you know why there would be, had a minimum of 32 days between the last approved inspection and the notice of non-compliance? Have you got an explanation for that?
No.
So you had an approved inspection on August 31st. So you had an approved inspection on August 31st and then on October 2nd, the next inspection was actually a notice of non-compliance?
Right, and in the interim, the roof had been completed, as Travis believed it could be.
Good. So when you get an inspection report, was that like an email or was that a hard talk?
It's on a website, B S N A.
I probably read that, but.
It's the city's website, is it B S N A? They have that, that's where we found them.
Okay, that's all for me for tomorrow. Thank you.
I have one question. Do you know if, in order to get this in compliance, would all the porches need to change or a portion of the porches change?
Could we show John the illustration?
The illustration of the previously approved plan?
Yeah, of the trellis.
All right, I know what we're talking about, but I'm just, there's a front porch, there's a side porch and there's a back porch. Would they all need to change or would changing one of them bring you in compliance?
I believe they all would have changed, all along the front and the front right and two corners in the back.
Gotcha.
Put the image up on the screen.
Yeah, no, I'm familiar. I drove by and took a look today.
I have a question about the nine examples that I think is more for you. Is it okay to ask that question?
Sure. It might be for me and it might be for Darren, but go ahead and ask.
Okay. Are the nine examples a legitimate or defensible example that can be used to set precedence? There's language in the code about garages built right on the property line. If it exceeds 60% in a block, I don't know that the number is correct, then anybody who's building a new garage in that same block can build out to the property line.
So from an evidentiary perspective in, in this context, with regards to those nine examples, the nine examples were presented by the applicant. So if you would want city staff to go back and research those nine examples and how, whether or not it is in fact they are in excess of block coverage as required by code and how that came to happen, you would need to table these, you need to finish the public hearing and table the deliberations and come back for another public hearing or, or table this right now and come back for another public hearing at the, at the next meeting. Because city staff has not provided in their rapport any commentary on the other nine alleged out of compliance laws.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. I think I have one more question for you guys and the builders involved went as somebody who agreed to do the job and read the plans and works with the architect. I understand through the documentation you provided in your own testimony that he acknowledged making the mistake. And my question is, would you hold him culpable for retaining that and have it not be at your expense? Because in the end, the responsibility is his as your builder.
He has already told us that he wouldn't do that. But, but, you know, we, we are seeking the variance so it doesn't happen, you know, because.
It's a super uncomfortable decision.
Yeah.
I just had to ask.
Yeah, of course.
To change it at this point would leave the decks open to Sandpoint weather. It would make the house less secure in that regard. And so seeing that we're at this place, that's why we're seeking the variance.
Well, even with the, if, if the builder would have built a plan, the decks would still be exposed, correct?
I think it's the hardship in terms of the financial and aesthetic loss. You know, because of the miscommunication or lack of communication, we invested thousands of dollars in labor and materials to complete a project that months later we were told, well, no, in a kind of, I mean, in my, in my thinking, and I know everybody thinks about this differently, but we're being asked to get approval for a house that's already been approved.
Yeah, I was just asking the question.
Yeah.
You know, I understand.
Yeah.
I've never been in that situation before.
Yeah. So we would have, you know, we were all set to do the trellising. But then, once we understood or misunderstood that, that by way of the inspections being approved, that it could be completed the way it was, we, we were happy about that. I mean, we, we would want them covered. But, but we were ready to build it the way it had been permitted. So there was.
Well, that's apparent from the new designs.
Yeah, yeah.
But thank you for clarifying.
Yeah, of course.
Do any commissioners have additional questions?
I do not.
Thank you.
No.
Then we will now proceed with the public hearing. And as a reminder, if commissioners have any questions for the person testifying, they should ask those questions at the time of that testimony. The public hearing is now open. For those participating on Zoom, please note that you will need a working microphone on your phone or computer to speak. When your name is called, you will see a prompt on your screen asking whether you would like to unmute. Then you will need to unmute yourself in order to be heard. Each speaker will be allowed three minutes. Clerk, is there anyone who would like to testify in favor?
For those participating on Zoom, if you would like to testify in favor of this request, please raise your hand at this time. We do have someone, Mr. Chairman. Julie McCollum.
Hello, this, my name's Julie McCollum. I live on St. Clair and I wrote an email that, I don't know if you received it because I didn't write it until yesterday or Monday. But I just want to speak as a friend of Erin and Anne and as a neighbor in that area, that I'm fully in support of the variance request. I really don't see a reason to deny it. And I can also speak as having been a colleague of Anne's to the integrity of both Anne and Erin. And so I'm really just here as support for them and support for the process. I really don't have much more to speak because I'm obviously not a builder, I'm a teacher, but just feeling a sense of the integrity of the house as it is and the sense of goodwill on the city's part towards these, this family and their creation of a residence here in Sandpoint and gracing our community with their presence and their house's presence. So thank you.
Any questions, commissioners?
No.
No questions.
No.
And that was our only in favor at this time?
I do not see any other hands raised for in favor, Mr. Chairman.
Is there anyone who would like to testify who is neutral?
No hands raised, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Is there anyone who would like to testify who was opposed?
And yes, we have one, Mr. Chairman. Scott Sherman.
Hello, can you hear me?
Can.
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Thank you. I, I want to just kind of make sure we bear that we're not questioning the beauty of the house or anything like that. I think what we're asking the city to do is have processes where they uphold their codes. We recently went through the building process. I can tell you, we spent a lot of time making sure that our footprint met the guidelines of the code. We spent a lot of time going into the office of the city. They were very helpful and there were things we would have liked to have done. We would have liked to have an ADU. We would have liked to have more deck coverage area. But when you go through that process of coming up with your plans, you make trade-offs. If you want covered decks, you can't do an ADU or you can't do as big of an ADU. That's the agreement you make with the city. And the reason we wrote that letter is we're also concerned if we start to set a precedent, then we're going to have a lot more houses. Right now, it's, say, going from 35% to 40 or 45%. Pretty soon, it's 65%. Now we've got a bunch of houses that are really overreaching and everybody can start to kind of build what they want because the codes are not being upheld. And so, you know, we, we just know we went through that process. There's a lot of thought we put into that. We did a lot of research. We worked with our builder, we worked with the city. And in the end, you know, we built what we built because that was what we said we were going to build. And so that's, that's why we wanted to write against it. We, we don't know the residence. We don't have anything against the beauty of the home. I think it, yeah, it looks great. We would have liked to do more space, more building on our space had the permits and the codes allowed for. So that's all we'd like to say. Thank you for hearing us.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions? No.
No questions.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
There are no other hands raised, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Do commissioners have any additional questions?
No questions.
No.
So before the public hearing is closed, would the applicant care to offer any rebuttal testimony? And just a reminder that if any new facts are elicited during rebuttal, the public must be given an opportunity to comment on those new facts.
Sure. I, I don't think we have anything new. But just to address Mr. Sherman's comment about precedent, and maybe you can help me on that. Under Sandpoint City Code Number One, no non-conforming use of neighborhood lands, structures or buildings in the same district and no permitted or non-conforming uses of land, structures or buildings in other districts shall be considered grounds for issuance of a variance. And it's a lot of legal, legal work, you know. But is that not protection against precedent?
It's not a non-conforming use analysis. This is not a non-conforming use analysis. That code's not applicable to this situation because this matter isn't about use.
Oh, yay.
It's about lot coverage.
All right, good. So then my question would be, is there anything in the code that does protect against precedent? Or not?
So there's a lot of case law with regards to precedent and there are a lot of procedural opportunities for applicants if something transpires that's not favorable to you.
Yeah.
And so I think that's the question you're asking, is what, what happens if this isn't granted? And what happens next?
No, I, Mr. Sherman had mentioned that this granting us the variance would set precedent.
That is true.
Yeah, that is true. Yeah. Right, because we have cited nine potential.
No, there's been no analysis of the nine that you listed on our, our.
But if they were, then that would be precedent.
It, it all depends.
Yeah.
That's a lawyer under for you. It all depends.
All right, then I don't, I've already addressed Mr. Sherman's comments that he wrote in his letter, which are basically the same. So I don't have anything, I don't have a rebuttal. Do you have a rebuttal or anything?
Nope.
And I think we're okay to move on then.
So you just want to make sure that all the commissioners have asked whatever questions that they have of the.
And do I need to formally ask Mr. Sherman if he wants any? There's nothing new. Thank you very much. Any other commissioners have questions of the applicants before we move on?
No.
None here.
Okay. So the public hearing is now closed. And at this time, the commission will deliberate. No new information may be provided and questions may be directed to the city staff only during deliberation. The staff report includes our suggested motions. So we're open for discussion.
The thought that I have is that granting this, just by my train of thought, granting this would not set a precedent because I believe the city, somebody in the city had made a, potentially had made an error at some level or someday that would allow this to happen. And that wouldn't happen again in the future. So if future applicants ask for this, there is, there's a pretty good reason to say no because somehow the error was made and to remedy the situation. Although I'm not sure granting it is the correct remedy. I feel like it doesn't set a precedent because the error was made. So I don't, I don't fear that the precedent allowing other applicants to, to be allowed to ask for this has a, you know, a change to the code. I also feel like the code is the code. And we should try as much as possible to stick to the code. I don't see any, like, like has been stated, the any features to the land or the area that make this variance, you know, able to be passed because it's not a unique situation as far as land or area. So on one hand, I feel like, I feel like this situation should be remedied because the code is, is number one. It's definitely an unfortunate situation because hopefully it could have been avoided and hopefully it doesn't happen again because it's, it's a great burden for you guys, especially and the builder. And it's been a long time period that, you know, it shouldn't have happened this way. And I'm not, I don't think I can put blame on any one person or, or even the city, actually, because I haven't heard any testimony of anybody being able to point a finger at exactly what the, the error in the process was, except that inspections were made and, and the inspection reports are pretty, there's really nothing there, except that they were approved. So we just, I feel like that says that everything was fine. And then the notice, I'm not sure that that really explains why the error was made either. So definitely a tough situation. I, I feel like that the situation should be remedied though, even at the cost of remedying it. Because I do think that future applicants could say, you know, 20 years from now, if the code stays the same, they could say, well, that house got the variance. And maybe just because there was an error made potentially at the city level, that should not be allowed to move forward and, and help set that precedent or, or at least have the question be able to be asked of the city in the future. So that's kind of where I'm standing right now.
I, um, I don't see how a variance can be granted based on the law. I think the house fits great and is a great house for the property. But I'm not sure that the variance is an appropriate remedy. That's why I asked the applicants how they felt like they met those four conditions. And the assumption that a variance would be granted to others in similar circumstances so they're not getting preferential treatment. I can't go along with that because we represent the city and I'm not confident that I could grant a variance. Some redress does seem appropriate, but I'm not sure that a various, a variance is it. And it may be useful to determine whether the city is at fault here. But if we agree. But if we agree that the city should have told them earlier that their home was not in compliance, then we assume that the onus is on the city to make sure that all builders build, that comply with the code. And I don't know that that is appropriately the case. So I'm having a real hard time feeling like we can grant a variance and meet the requirements of the law.
Mr. Chairman, can I jump in here?
Yes.
My two cents worth is, I don't think you can make any of the required four findings. As early as March or April, the owners and the builders were notified that the plans were not in compliance with code. The owners and builders revised the plans for would be in compliance. So it's not like people didn't know what was required. As far as the interim inspections that took place, those are inspections by and large to make sure that the particular work is done in compliance with the building code. Those are not inspections to give a clean slate for any possible compliance of some other law out there. They're really building code inspections. When the city did eventually realize that what had been built was not in accordance with the approved plans, the city, of course, advised the owner, the builder, that it was not in compliance. So, you know, applying those undisputed facts to the four findings, I don't think you can make a single of the required four findings.
I would, anything else, Commissioner Riggs, before I?
No, I'm done.
When I was looking at that too, was looking at the four. And I mean, I think, again, without confirmation, if those numbers are correct for other homes in the neighborhood. But I know just from driving around and looking, there are certainly homes on that block with much larger footprints than what our applicants are proposing. I think that of those four, three of them can be made. My question is, the special considerations, conditions, and circumstances do not result from actions of the applicant. And it would seem to me that's what we have here. And let me ask for clarification. When it says of the applicants in this situation, is the builder and the applicant one and the same, if you will, in terms of responsibility for action?
Yes.
That's what I would have thought. So for me, it comes down to if a case can be made that the reason for this falls almost solely on the city. And again, that's not the point of city inspections, is my understanding. That's my two cents.
On the other hand, an attractive house that meets a lot of our goals is almost finished at that address. Is there any other, any other approach that the applicants could take to leave that house there? Is a variance the only legal way that it can be there? Darren, you got any idea about that?
I somehow knew that was going to fall to me, Mr. Chairman. You know, just a couple of things that I think I should say to get on the record here. And the first is, in, you know, in the spirit of being positive, this is a fabulous looking structure and I compliment the applicants and their architect. You know, I think it's a very handsome house and it fits very well with the neighborhood. I hope the commission and the applicants can both appreciate the predicament that staff is in. We don't have discretion. We have the code as written and not as we would want it to be written. And believe me, as I get into the code and look at other situations, there are issues that, you know, that are in there that are not perfect. And no code has ever been perfect that I've ever seen. But we do have the code as written to deal with. And I want to make it very clear that whatever the city did or did not do with regard to inspections is really not germane to this question. Those inspections are rather pro forma, dealing with life safety issues. The city has a single inspector for the entire city who's pretty well worked just doing those, you know, what the code requires as far as the life safety questions. And so whatever finding the commission makes, I hope it will not be based on the fact that the city staff did or did not do something correctly with the city code because they were doing what they were charged. The only other remedy that I can really see here is an amendment to the code. If the commission feels that the code is improperly written or that the 35% is an arbitrary or unreasonable standard, then the correct action is to fix the code. But I am with the commission that, you know, there's a very, this is a difficult question. And these are, you know, these are not people that are trying to do something untoward to the community. But it's also pretty clear that what we have here doesn't comply with the code that we have. And so I hate to leave it in your lap that way. But as staff, that is really the best I can do for you. And to say that, you know, if the standard is not reasonable or not one that is working for the city, the proper course of action is to fix the code.
All right, thanks.
But to be clear and for the record, you can't fix the code here tonight.
We don't have a code amendment in front of us. That is true.
I don't feel like, I can walk away from here tonight knowing that the four conditions are completely satisfied. But I also don't feel like I can walk away from here saying that what they're asking is something that wouldn't be acceptable for the community. So I'm, I'm, you know, I'm just thinking about her.
Do we have other deliberations or? No. Anybody care to make a motion at this time?
I'll make a motion. I move the Sandpoint Planning Commission, oh, sorry, I got to make this bigger. I can't quite read it. I move the Sandpoint Planning Commission, after consideration of the criteria and relevant standards of Idaho Code and Sandpoint City Code, deny the request by Erin Levi and Anne Neal for a variance from Sandpoint City Code. I can't quite see it all. Just a minute. Number 9-4-1-3-C2 to construct a single-family dwelling with a detached garage and accessory dwelling unit in excess of a 35% lot coverage allowed in the RS zone on the property legally described as lot five block 11 of South Maids, second addition to Sandpoint. The reasons for this decision are, staff has followed the notice procedures, so including what's listed here, number one, number two, number three, number four, number five, and number six.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion? Ready to vote? Do you like to call?
Commissioner Hastings?
Yes.
Commissioner Shaw?
No.
Commissioner Huesman?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunkel?
Yes.
Commissioner Riggs?
Yes.
Commissioner Camp?
Yes.
Commissioner Booker is abstaining. Motion passes, Mr. Chairman.
The motion passes. Is there any for the business? I don't believe there is. So we are open to adjournment?
Move to adjourn.
Send me a second. Motion to adjourn. Are we all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, adjourn that. 652.